Okay, I think we're still missing a couple of board members, but we're going to go ahead and get started. We ask for the courtesy of the board member's staff and those that are participating electronically that you please silence your cell phones. Good morning and welcome to the Orange County School Board's work session, which had been scheduled today for the purpose of discussing student discipline. The public will not have an opportunity to participate in this work session to provide public comment because this is not a regularly scheduled board meeting. No action will be taken and there will be no pre-agenda period in which the public normally addresses the school board on relevant topics that are related to the work of the school board. Thank you so much for being here with us this morning. Board members are attending in person and telephonically, so I'll take a roll call. Chair Jacobs.
Chair Jacobs.
Present.
Member Gallo.
Member Gallo.
Present. Member Lopez is not here yet. Member Cobert.
Good morning.
Member Gould is not with us today. Member Felder is not here yet. Dr. Castredennel.
I am here.
And Member Bird is present. I want to remind the public that the board members will not be engaging in outside electronic or digital communication during the meeting so that we can focus on the meeting itself, giving our attention to the matters immediately before us. Should you want to contact us, please do so before or after each meeting. And it looks like Member Felder has joined us. Hello.
Hi.
Good morning. Oh, and Member Lopez, alright. Good morning. To my fellow board members and district staff when speaking, please make sure that your microphone is turned on and you speak directly into it so our YouTube viewers can hear you clearly. We're going to start with a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. Now for the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Dr. Vasquez, would you like to get us started?
Thank you. Good morning. Today, we have staff that will be presenting on the code of conduct, our discipline procedures. They've done a tremendous job of going back, looking at the steps that we take from referral all the way to an appeal at the school board. And then after, we'll take any questions that board members have.
Good morning. Can you hear me? Hello? Is that better? Okay. Good morning. I'm Sarah Kopeski. And here with me today are the area administrators. And that includes Ms. Mickey Joyner, Mr. Tony Bullard, Mr. David Schmidt, Ms. Delilah Hernandez, and Mr. Derek Fontaine. And we also have Ms. Sarah Corin, also from our legal department here, to assist with this presentation. Today, we're going to review the school environmental safety incident reporting structure, and that's what we call CESSR. And then we're going to move into our Level 4 procedures, our disciplined consequence matrix, data and case studies. And then we'll go to superintendent comments and school board questions. So to start with CESSR. CESSR actually consists of 26 incidents of crime, violence, and disruptive behaviors that occur on school grounds, on school transportation, and off-campus school-sponsored events. CESSR is tracked 365, 24 hours a day. So even if an incident occurs after hours on a school campus, we would still be required to report it. It starts with Section 1,006.07, subsection 9 of the Florida statutes, which was adopted in 2019 by Senate Bill 7030. It requires that the district adopt a policy to ensure accurate and timely reporting. It also ties the superintendent to CESSR reporting and makes her responsible for that. It requires the State Board of Education to adopt rules establishing requirements of CESSR. And it requires the Office of Safe Schools to publish on its website the most recent CESSR data. This is the rule that was adopted by the State Board of Education pursuant to that statute that required them to adopt this. It was adopted a year after the statute went into effect in June 2020. And it's been revised again in August 2021. And I believe there are discussion about revising it again coming up soon. It provides CESSR incidents and related definitions. And this rule is actually in the notebook that was provided to you, so that way you can go through it and read through it if you'd like. It does require staff to take CESSR training. It provides accountability for CESSR reporting. And it requires three criteria be met when determining whether something should be reported to CESSR. So this is all in the rule and it comes from the State Board of Education. The first requirement is that the incident meets a CESSR definition. The second is that it must have occurred on school campus, transportation, at a school-sponsored activity, or off-campus through electronic means if the incident substantially disrupts the educational environment. That last one actually comes from state statutes. That's our bullying harassment statute. So if there is something that occurs off-campus through electronic means, we can actually take jurisdiction for it if there is a substantial impact on the school or on the victim. So that's why that portion's in there. And then it uses that word "and," so that requires that we have all three met before we can code it as CESSR. And the third says where the incident was carried out by a student, taking into account their developmentally age-appropriate behavior and disability, if any, the student had the capacity to understand his or her behavior and the inappropriateness of his or her actions. However, I did put an asterisk next to that because although OCPS does take age and disability into account when determining the consequence for a student, we actually don't look at it as when we're coding something as CESSR because we are required by CESSR to report every incident that occurs on campus. And so we fill out a referral and we report it for CESSR. But then when it comes to the consequence, we look at their age and disability to determine what the consequence will be. So that may vary based on age and disability. And that's just really to ensure appropriate and proper reporting across the district so that way we don't have two principals coding something differently. The next, so what from statute to rule, now to board policy, which is also required to be adopted by that statute I presented at the beginning. And we actually adopted the language in 2019. So when that statute initially went into effect, or that portion of the statute went into effect, we went ahead and changed policy JICK, which is our threats policy. And we added the language in there that basically says we will be accurate when reporting CESSR. Later on, we did move that over to policy JIC under the Code of Student Conduct because it was just more appropriately, fit more appropriately there than it did under the threat policy. And so we've had that, we've been in compliance with that portion of the statute since 2019. Our policy requires accurate and timely reporting of CESSR incidents and requires schools to follow the rules established by the Office of Safe Schools. And then we also have the Office of Safe Schools Guidance. There is a link on the PowerPoint that will take you directly there. There's data on there about different districts across the state of Florida. There's also definitions on there and they give examples. Also within your notebook, we did break down the data from the five largest school districts, including Orange, from 2016 all the way up to 2020, 2021. We don't have the current year yet, but just so you can see the difference between Orange County and then the other larger districts side by side. The Office of Safe Schools also provides a CESSR poster, which is also in your notebook, and that is distributed to all the schools across Orange County. We have issued memorandum before and the area administrators provide training every summer on CESSR and the requirement of anyone touching discipline to take the CESSR training. However, I will say the training, last time I had checked, had not changed and the Office of Safe Schools was in the process of updating it, so staff wasn't able to actually access it. And if a staff member had already taken the training, they couldn't go back in and take it again. So they're in the process of updating all of that. So it is a requirement to do the training, however, we're kind of waiting on the Office of Safe Schools to complete that. And then it provides responses to answers regarding CESSR. So again, like I said, they have examples on there and things like that. And then for us, what we do administratively, so from our standpoint, we review the CESSR updates every year, whether they're updating the rule, the poster. We update the referral to match the CESSR information that we're provided with. So we make sure that's taken care of annually. We also update the code, obviously, every summer, and we update the referral to match that. We do annual training. Like I said, the area administrators do summer training for all discipline administrators and they also do new deans training. So anytime a dean is appointed to discipline, they have a training for those staff members as well. We do the CESSR training, which I just explained. We're waiting on updates on that. But we also do CESSR training for our discipline clerks and anyone that's considered an end user. So basically, if an incident occurs in a school, the dean or AP or principal, whomever fills out the referral, they then hand that to the discipline clerk or the person who's inputting that information. They're considered the end user. And we do trainings with those folks as well as to how to properly enter information when they're looking at the referral. So that's done as well. And then what happens with our CESSR data, how it goes to the state, we actually don't pull the information and send it to them. The state comes into Skyward and they pull that information on the backside. So they go in monthly under Survey R and they pull that information and they see exactly what our data is, what offenses we have. They then send that back to us and they say, hey, we saw an issue here, there was an error there, and you might have an error if you... Okay, so say, say, Delilah and I, sorry, I'm going to use it as an example. We're involved in the same incident. There should only be one incident number, even though there are two students. So we may get an error back saying, wait a minute, you have two incident numbers. You should only have one because it comes from the same event. So that's where we would get feedback on that. We also, they also come in and extract data from Skyward from the first day of school through about mid-October. And they review that and that's submitted with Survey 2. They come in for Survey 3 and they go from the first day of school through mid-February. And they look at that data and again, provide us feedback on any errors that we have and what we need to fix. Then they go in for Survey 5. That's the big one. That's where you'll get the data on cesser.org, which is the link that I provided. And that's for the entire school year. So that's from the first day of school all the way through June and they take that data, they send it back to us to make any corrections. We do that and then we submit that as a final number. State reporting also does weekly meetings with the BPO of Discipline. And that's twice a week typically, on Mondays and Wednesdays. And they go over all the errors that we have with CESSR, any issues that we see there with not just CESSR but also with student discipline. So that's another checks and balance that we have in place to make sure that we are accurate, accurately reporting that information. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Hernandez to go over Level 4.
Good morning. Can you hear me? Wonderful. Okay, well, we are going to go over the Level 4 procedures with you. And we're going to take you through the process, the entire process, all the way from the beginning when a student receives the referral till the very end when that parent can come to the board and speak to the board, okay? For this, I'd like to use the example of a student receiving a Level 4F drugs use referral. And we'll just say marijuana, okay? So step one, there's a total of 13 steps in all. If you have questions about any of the steps, please feel free to ask. But let's start off with step number one. And step one is simply conversation. The principal designee, it could be assistant principal, the dean, will speak to the student and say something like, you were observed smoking marijuana in the restroom, right? So that's step one, is to inform the student of what is happening, what is suspected. Step two, the student is given the right to write a witness statement, okay? And in that statement, we do not force students to write statements. It is an option that is clearly stated in the witness statement form. If they choose to write a statement, we give them enough time. They write whatever they like. I will tell you, the process is a little different for our little ones, right? So a kindergartner, a first grader may not be able to write an entire paragraph. So our staff is trained and we do have two people in the room, always someone that the little one is familiar with, and they just dictate, this is what happened to me. And then that is transcribed by the adult. And the adult who transcribes it does sign their name there, okay? And we do that also with ESE students, depending on their ability to write as well. But the student always is given an opportunity to say, this is what happened, okay? The student is also given an opportunity to name witnesses. So if someone, in the case of, let's say, this middle school student who was observed smoking marijuana, was anyone else in the bathroom with you? If that's the case, then they can write their names, the names of the students there. And then again, those students will then be given the opportunity to write a statement if they choose, okay? Step three, now we're talking about the referral. So now the school has received the witness statements from everyone. They have read the statements. If they feel that this does meet the criteria, again, we're talking about, let's say, drugs, the principal or the designee gives the student the actual referral, right? That is their notice, saying, we suspect that you, or we have enough evidence that states that you were in possession of marijuana or smoking marijuana in the restroom. They give the student that referral, typically with a Level 4. There is a 10-day suspension. That is not always the case. Again, in the case of a little one, kindergartner, we're not going to send them home for 10 days unless it's something major. That's typically not the case, right? They may go home for a day. They may spend the day in the office in ISS. But for the most parts, right, our majority of our Level 4s are middle and high school. There is a 10-day suspension that comes with that. Does not mean that the student is out 10 days, but they can be out for up to 10 days. Within the 10-day period, we will hold our meeting, our DTM, our Level 4 meeting, okay? So that takes you to step number three. That referral, when you give notice to that parent that it's a Level 4, it's also giving them notice that their child may be expelled, okay? So step four takes it a little further. Now we are sending a letter home to the parent within 24 hours of that first day of suspension. And it lays out there very clearly that this is an offense that the student may be expelled. It does give them the date and the time of the DTM, okay? So that the parent will receive the one, the referral, when that student gets home. But sometimes we know those referrals don't get to the parents. So then we also mail a letter home to the parents as well, okay? And that's aside from the phone call because when we process a referral, the administration always calls the parent and says, your child is going home today. They received a referral for this and this and this. So they get a copy of the referral, they get a parent phone call and a letter, okay? Moving on to step number five. Before the DTM even occurs, the parent does have the right to appeal or to hold a conference with the principal if they don't agree with the findings or they may be confused with the process. So they have three days to request that and that the school administrator can meet with the parent and discuss the why, right? This is what we, what we found, this is what your child says, and this is why we believe it's a Level 4. Step six, redacted copies. The parents have the right to see what evidence is being used against their child, right? If we're saying, well, we believe that your child was smoking marijuana in the restroom, well then why do we believe that? We have 10 statements. Of the 10 statements, eight say that they saw your child. And they have the right to those copies. We redact those copies because we do protect the names and identities of other students. However, if it's an adult, if it's an SRO, those names are there. So they have the right to know, this teacher walked into the restroom and smelled marijuana or saw your child with marijuana in their hands, right? If there is a search checklist or if the student was searched, if they, when the marijuana is tested, tests positive, they can see that test. We take pictures of it. So it's full transparency. We want the parents to know, this is why we're moving forward with a Level 4, okay? So it's that copy of that evidence. That's step six. Now step seven. Step seven talks about the DTM, but I do want to mention one side that's not here, which is what we do on our end, okay? When that school completes their investigation and they put together a packet, and that packet could be 10 pages, it could be 100 pages, depending on the offense, that is sent to our office. And we immediately take that and then we put a date on our calendar. So we already know this is a date and the time that the meeting is going to happen. Well, before that meeting even occurs, five area administrators review that packet. And we spend an entire day, sometimes more than a day, reviewing, we review every single Level 4 that is turned into the district, every single one. We look for due process violations. We make sure that our students' rights are, have not been violated. And then we look at, okay, does this actually meet the criteria of a Level 4? If it does not, then we return that or we simply tell the school, no, this is not, this does not meet the criteria for the 4. But if we decide that it is, then we, obviously, we move forward and we go to the DTM, okay? Again, in that meeting, we have the five area administrators. If we have a question or a concern, sometimes we even have legal join in with us as well to give us their opinion. But the five area administrators are there. We vet everything. We do this for consistency. We do it so that we are not liable for being inconsistent. So when I say that a Level 4, when I verify a Level 4 at Avalon Elementary, it's the same Level 4 that I would verify at, you know, Endeavor Elementary School or Bonneville, okay? Again, consistency. So the area administrator, we hold the DTM as soon as possible. Again, we're not trying to keep our kiddos out for 10 days. As soon as we have that spot in our calendar, we have that always within the 10-day period though, okay? You have a notebook in front of you here. In the notebook, we actually have samples of the DTM forms for you to view. And these forms are also in all five major languages because we want to make sure that the parents, and it's towards the end, if you look at it there... Yeah, you have it also electronically as well. But we want to make sure that the parents understand what they are signing when they're at the forum. If a parent speaks, and we've had many, you know, so many different languages, we also use our language line. And so we have an interpreter that's right there to ask questions and just to make sure the parents understand everything that's happening in that meeting, okay? During that meeting, we review the evidence. Again, the same packet that was submitted to the team, we review with the parents. We begin the meeting by asking the school to tell us, you know, why are we here, right? Then we always follow up and we ask questions of the student. We give the parents an opportunity to ask questions, to voice their concerns. Sometimes the parents don't appeal the process or they can't come and have a conference with the principal. So they're asking those questions at that time. We make sure that the school is there to answer or that we may answer on our end, okay? Questions so far? Yes. Oh. Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I...
No, at the end.
Hold on just one minute. I do, I had General Counsel Keaton, were you keyed in from chair?
For the chair, yeah. She had a CESSR question. I didn't know. Usually, we do the whole presentation and then we take questions.
Yeah, okay. So why don't we do that? Let's go ahead and finish.
Let's just go ahead and finish. Okay. At the meeting, we review all of the documentary evidence that's submitted. We make sure that the student has, has received due process. We provide, again, the parent an opportunity to ask questions, okay? Now, a day before the meeting, we do ask the parents because the parents have the right to bring anyone that they would like to the DTM. And sometimes that's, we've had attorneys, we have had aunts, grandmothers. I've had pastors come in with that parent. The parent is allowed to bring anyone that they would like. Sometimes just there to guide them or to make them feel better. Sometimes they bring up wonderful points, but we don't stop them from bringing anyone that they'd like. They do need to notify the school a day in advance. Now, if it's an attorney, we do need to know prior so that we can either set up time for our attorneys to be there or just to be ready for that, okay? And now, Ms. Joyner?
Alright, now we're at step nine. So the decision is made by the area administrator to verify the Level 4. If the Level 4 is a full exclusion with continuing educational services, the superintendent may extend the student's suspension. That means the student will stay tied to the school and receive assignments until we, until they come to the board meeting. Or if the decision is made by the area administrator for them to have an alternative placement, they are withdrawn at the table and they are transferred to positive pathways. Withdrawing them at the table gives us an opportunity to keep track of the student. The parent has three opportunities as to what they're going to do for their child's education. Like I said, we can transfer them to positive pathways. We offer the parent Florida Virtual School, if the parent is interested in Florida Virtual School. The guidance counselor is part of the meeting and the guidance counselor will work with the mom as to what classes that they recommend the student enrolls in at positive pa, me, I'm sorry, at Florida Virtual School. Or sometimes the parents withdraw the student and say, I'm going to private school. The parents, those are the parents' options. They don't have to take positive pathways. But going to positive path, positive pathways give them the best opportunity to continue educational services with Orange County Public Schools. Positive pathways can match their schedule. Maybe sometimes may not be able to match the electives, but those core classes, positive pathways can match. Parents also, at that time, they can request an administrative hearing. So if the parent would like to have an administrative hearing, they can fill out a form. They have 14 days from the day of that meeting to request an administrative hearing. The administrative hearing can be for procedure safeguards or they might want to dispute the, the evidence that was provided by the school. So on day 15, if we haven't heard from them, then we proceed with putting them on the matrix to come before the board. If the student has a full exclusion, they get a 120 hearing. And a 120 hearing is a little bit different than the administrative hearing. The 120 hearing is with, with an attorney. Parents, the same, they have an opportunity to have legal representation. If they want legal representation, they have to notify us so we can also have our legal representation attend. Or parents just can bring whoever they want to. Step 11. The administrative hearing officer will either recommend to uphold the DTM decision or recommend to overturn the decision. At that time, if the parent disagrees, then the parent can schedule a meeting with the principal supervisor. And at that time, the principal supervisor will look at the evidence. The principal supervisor will review the documentary evidence and procedure safeguards and provide a recommendation to the superintendent for review. Then the superintendent shall review the principal supervisor's recommendation and should have the authority to recommend to the board that the student be expelled or whether action is taken. And then that brings us to step 13, is when the parent and guardian have the right to appeal before the board. Factual evidence, which was not properly presented either at the DTM or the administrative hearing, may not be presented to the board. So when a parent is coming to the board, they should be presenting the facts that they have at hand because they've had several opportunities to bring forth new facts, new evidence. They had an opportunity at the DTM. They had an opportunity at the administrative hearing. And they've had an opportunity with the principal supervisor. So that's our 13 steps for our Level 4 process. Now, we're going to go through our discipline matrix. That's also in your notebook. And what I just want to point out, our matrix is progressive. Also, if you notice, for K2, over, I would say, 90%, they get a safe referral and they get an intervention program. A very serious incident, like a 4E threat to the school, if you look on the sixth well, they may get recommended for 180 days at positive pathways. For our very serious drug offenses, they may get a full exclusion. For H, firearm weapons. If a kid is in possession of a firearm or some type of destructive device across the board, K through 12, they're recommended for a full exclusion. That's considered one of our... Zero tolerance, thank you. Alright, another one that's very serious is sexual battery. 3 through 12, we recommend full exclusions. Selling of drugs, 3 through 12, we recommend full exclusions. And also homicide and kidnapping across the board, K through 12, full exclusion is recommended. All right, we've also listed the top four drug offenses for last school year. The number one was 4F, drug possession use. Number two was 4Y, physical attack. Three was other dangerous objects, which is not a Cessar offense. And the last two to tie was 4P, sexual offenses, and 4C, threats to a person. All right, we also want to take you through a couple of case studies.
Okay, case study number one. This is a six-year-old female in first grade. Her offense was a 4Y, physical attack. And the student simply left her seat. She walked across their classroom and used a pair of scissors to cut another student in the back of the neck. The cut caused an open wound on the student's neck, okay? And her consequence was positive pathways in lieu of a full exclusion. Now, in this case, I'll explain to you, she's in first grade. It's very difficult to fully exclude a first-grade student, right? So when the team looked in conjunction with the parent and, you know, the district, we decided full exclusion is not going to help a six-year-old, right? So let's place her in positive pathways where there's a smaller environment, students are very controlled, and they can look into other things that can be put in place to help her in the future, so that she does not act this way again, okay? First grade. Case study number two. Now, we're at second grade. We have an eight-year-old male, 4O, sexual harassment. And this student took a picture of his penis on his school laptop and showed it to multiple students in class. The consequence for this one was OCPS Skills Intervention Program. Again, eight-year-old male, second grader. So we look into, okay, how old is the student? Do they really know what's happening? Will they benefit from a placement at positive pathways? Or should we just have a counselor sit down and really talk to them about what is appropriate, what is not appropriate? You are given this laptop, and it's for educational purposes, and, you know, what we don't want to do. And so that counselor sits with them, parents know about the counseling, counselor sits with them and just talks them about best practices, and what to do, and how to take care of our laptops. And we have the discussion of keeping your privates private, okay?
All right, case study number three. 11th grade, 16-year-old male. A student approached administration that a fight had occurred over the weekend. She was fearful of one of the boys who had engaged in the fight, because the student was sitting in her class. So when they went to identify the student, she, they also noticed that there was like a bulge in his waistband. And there were also pictures of him on, I think Instagram or one of those social media sites, holding up what appeared to be a gun. So the principals and the SRO entered the room, asked the student to be, to come with them. They, the principal wanted him to give her the backpack. He refused, so the SRO had to get involved. The student, it took them maybe about three to four minutes before they could get the backpack away from the student, but the SROs finally got the backpack. So when they walked the student down to a private office to discuss things with him, and to search their, search his book pack, book bag, they found a handgun, they found money, they found packaging prepared for marijuana. This student was taken into custody, and the parent was notified. This student was recommended for a full exclusion. Oh, I'm sorry. I went back the wrong way. Dr. Vasquez?
Thank you very much. And the presentation is very timely, very well, all the details of the various steps included. And we know the importance of safety in keeping our schools safe, and so we are now ready to take board members' questions.
Okay, thank you. We're going to first go to Chair Jacobs, who's on the phone.
Jacobs, who's on the phone?
Thank you. Can you all hear me okay?
Yeah.
Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I want to take us back to Cessar at the beginning of the report. I had two issues there. I noticed that with Cessar I violations, those are the most severe. And with our code, a number one is the least severe. And I wondered why, I wondered if we could align them, because I think it's a little confusing, that one is most severe and least severe. Is there any reason why our code doesn't align with Cessar? I'm sure, I know our code was created before Cessar, but can I have some input from staff on that?
Sure, Jacobs, you're correct.
Chair Jacobs, you're correct.
Our code was created prior to Cessar, but we can align our code in referral to match Cessar, where our level one offense will be our most severe.
Okay, Chair Jacobs.
So that would be an option if we wanted to do that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. The second thing, it seems to me that the definition of campus disruption seems different, quite different in our code versus Cessar, for one. In our code, that's a level four, and in Cessar, it's a level three. So for us, it's the most serious offense, and for Cessar, it's mid-range. And yet, for Cessar, it lists things like bomb threats, inciting a riot, initiating a false alarm. Whereas, our definition and interpretation of disruption of a campus, as applied in the last case we had, was a much lower standard, but deemed a higher level of seriousness. And I don't know if that's a question or a statement. I just, it seems to me that we ought to have, if we're reporting these to Cessar, and we're reporting it based on how we code it, then our definition and our application ought to be the same.
Go ahead, staff.
Go ahead, staff.
Chair Jacobs, this is Erica Pesci.
Oh, your microphone's not on.
I'm not hearing anybody.
We're working on it.
We're working on it.
Okay, thank you. So there's two parts to that. Cessar sees disruption of a campus as a three, mid-range, and we see it as the highest defense level of four. And they cite things like a bomb threat, which obviously would result in shutting down the whole campus, or clearing the whole campus. A false alarm, which would usually mean evacuating the campus and inciting a riot, which I think is a little bit different than shoving or hitting somebody in the back of the head.
Okay. Chair Jacobs, this is Erica Pesci.
Chair Jacobs, this is Erica Pesci. I apologize.
I was at the podium earlier.
Chair Jacobs, hold on just a minute. Could you mute your microphone while you're not speaking? Because we're getting feedback.
Thank you. So I was at the podium earlier, and the microphone wasn't on, so that's why there was silence. So first of all, back to the, why is it a level, I think you said a level three in Cessar, but it's a level four in our code. So if you go back through the PowerPoint, if you have it in front of you, almost every single level four offense is a Cessar offense. So I understand that they have varying degrees of severity within Cessar itself, but there's 26 offenses in Cessar, and majority of them are illegal criminal acts within the state of Florida. And so anything that is criminal, we typically make it a level four. And so that's why you'll see the major campus disruption is there. There's pretty much everything, like I said, in the level four is going to be a Cessar offense. There's only a few in level three, and a few in level two, and that's really our bullying, harassment offenses, our threat offenses, and tobacco. Everything else is going to pretty much fall as a level four. And then as for the definition, I'm trying to compare the two side by side, but I will tell you that Cessar has changed their definitions periodically over the last few years. And so this is definitely something that if the board agrees to, and they'd like to model all of our definitions off of Cessar, which we try to do every year, but sometimes they go in after we adopt the code and change it. I don't know what happened with this one. I'd have to go back and look. But the area administrators can definitely take a look at that this coming school year, and make those changes in our code to mirror the exact definition into Cessar, if that's something that the board would like to do.
Thank you. Chair Jacobs, do you follow up?
Yeah, Sarah, thank you. That first explanation was very helpful. I mean, the second one was as well, but the other comment I had, and it's moving on to the step process, under step 12, and can you maybe put that back up on the screen? I'm trying to get to it myself. The question I had under our Code of Conduct for the level three is a statement under 12 that gives broad authority to the superintendent to basically impose any discipline she feels appropriate after the administrative hearing officer has rendered a recommendation, and her area supervisor has rendered a recommendation, which I didn't note that that was pointed out in the presentation. But one of the reasons that we're having this discussion is the board wanted to have more latitude than we felt was available at the last discipline hearing, to either remand back or give direction to the superintendent. And the superintendent, based on our current code, already has that broad authority, and I just, I don't think any of us were looking at that. And it would seem to me that if the superintendent has that authority before it comes to the board, that it stands to reason the superintendent should have that authority after it comes to the board with board direction. Comments or questions about that issue? And I don't know if you've gotten to the, if you can tell me where the step 12 is in terms of your PowerPoint number, that would be helpful.
Sure. Good morning, Chair Jacobs. This is Sarah Corin. Responding to the matter, okay. When we look at step 12, the way that it has been interpreted is that the superintendent is reviewing the recommendations from the multi-levels of investigation from all of the staff and the vetting process, and then making that recommendation in line with the matrix and the code, so that there is consistency in how discipline is administered across the district. At that point, the superintendent is notifying the school board of their recommendation. And at that point, it would be for the school board to either uphold that recommendation, or to not uphold that recommendation. However, because at that point, the superintendent has already reviewed all of the information and made a recommendation, the operational decision of what that recommendation is has already been made by the superintendent. So directing the superintendent at that point to then change the decision would not necessarily be within the purview of the school board. However, what could be within the purview of the school board is if the school board itself wanted to make a recommendation on a change and vote on that from the dais, the school board can certainly take any action they wish to do so via appropriate motions and, you know, following Robert's Rules of Order, et cetera. But that would be, at that point, a school board decision. So if we look in the context of the last situation, it wouldn't have been, at that point, since the superintendent had already made their recommendation to the school board, the school board would either uphold that recommendation, not uphold that recommendation, or the school board itself can make their own decision, as you are able to do as a, you know, governing board. However, it would not be the appropriate recommendation to then tell the superintendent that she needs to make a different recommendation.
Okay, I appreciate that explanation. It's just not what we heard in the last discipline case. We heard a lot of different things in the last discipline case that were inconsistent, but I don't recall, and if other board members do, then please correct me, but I don't recall us having an option other than to vote down the recommendation, or to approve the recommendation. And then we were told different things about what it would mean if we rejected the recommendation, whether it'd go away, or whether it would drop back to the sentence, the time that was already served, or the consequence already served. So now, you're saying that the boards did have the authority to come up with a different recommendation and impose it themselves?
If I can jump in. I think, I think what happened last-
If I can jump in. I think, I think what happened last-
Is, is that we talked about adding additional language to step 13.
Chair Jacobs, can you mute?
Chair Jacobs, can you mute?
I'm sorry. Thank you. I don't hear it.
So, so what happened during that last discipline? We talked about adding additional language to step 13, where the board can overturn, uphold, or something else. And that would be a school board decision that Ms. Corin just explained. So that would be a change toward the language in our code.
And that is something that we are looking at proposing for when we update the code for the next school year. Something that we will also be looking at is the consideration that really only full exclusions need to be reviewed by the board in the end. So if we're talking in terms of the last discipline, that is something that by statute, this school district does review. But technically, under the statutory framework, the school board really only needs to review those full exclusions. So those are all recommendations and considerations that the area administrators will bring to you closer to the end of the year, so that when we're looking at updating the code for the following year, those decisions and recommendations can be made by the school board, because that, that would ultimately be your decision in approving the policy.
Okay, Chair Jacobs.
Okay, again, I didn't, that's not what I understood you were saying, Amanda. I thought you were saying that we already have that authority. So we're saying we can change number 13, which obviously needs to be changed, because it doesn't really say what happens. I have one other question. I know we let the parents know, and I'm not sure in how clear this is to parents, that any evidence they're going to submit has to be done at the hearing officer level, and can't be done at the board level. I want to make sure that that is abundantly clear to parents, because I think most of the time that these have come to us, we've heard additional testimony. But secondly, it seems to me if that's the rule that I think that the staff shouldn't be able to introduce additional evidence, either whether we're talking about discipline of students, or we're talking about disciplinary actions towards our staff, in terms of a due process. Would you agree with that, Sarah?
Chair, I would have to defer to Mr. Palmerini when it comes to information regarding the discipline of staff, because that is his area. He is here today, though, and could answer that question.
All right, how about with regard to discipline of students, Sarah, while you're at the podium? Can the staff introduce new evidence to the board that wasn't introduced at the hearing officer level if the parents can't?
We would not be introducing new evidence to the board at that point, at the point that we are bringing the discipline to the board. The, as we've discussed, the steps have already been gone through, and all of the evidence that the school district, and ultimately the superintendent is rendering her decision on, has been considered. So additional information would not be something that's considered, because the superintendent has already made her decision based on the information that she has available. And the families were already required to provide that information, which is what's, which is what is presented at the DTM, and then at the administrative hearing, and then also at the meeting between the administrative hearing and when the superintendent makes her decision.
All right, thank you. And then, if possibly, if John can respond on the discipline for employees?
So I think, Madam Chair, I think a couple of things. With respect to employees, you know, obviously, there's different avenues that we get. With respect to employees, you know, obviously, there's different avenues that we get to decide these cases. When you all hear an employee, employee discipline case, it is just the superintendent's recommendation to either, it's to terminate the employee. So the decision hasn't been made. And a lot of times, in employee cases, the board is asking questions about matters that are not in the actual documents. And sometimes that occurs in the student discipline cases, too, where we get to, in front of the board, and the board will ask, well, what about this situation? What kind of past discipline has there been? You know, how is this compared to that other case? And that's stuff that's not down below. But I think our staff, myself, and then the employee cases, and these folks in the student discipline cases are trying to be responsive to the school board so they have the full amount of information. It, it, it would have to be almost something that the board would have to police itself on, quite frankly. Or one of us would have to say, with all due respect, members of the board, this is outside of the record that you're able to consider. Because when this, when the board asks a question that's not reflected in the documentary evidence and it wasn't heard below, it is asking the staff to introduce new evidence that wasn't down below. And that's something I think we should try to avoid. The record is what it is in front of the school board, either in an employee or a student discipline case. And that's what should be concentrated on when the board is making its determination. But if the, you know, if staff is asked a question by the board members, you know, we may say, this is beyond what's in the record.
John, very helpful. And I know it's a little off task, but very helpful. And maybe at some point, the board should revisit that so that we're not taking staff down a path that wasn't pursued, or we're clear about what that path could be in terms of comparables. And the last question I had is, has to do with, has to do with full exclusions. So I'm assuming a full exclusion is a student. I'm sorry, I don't know where the echo is coming from. Full exclusions means the student is getting no education.
Chair Jacobs, this is Sarah Kopeski again. Full exclusion for a general education student does mean that they will be out for 180 days from the date of the offense, or the date the referral was issued, depending, because sometimes we have a Title IX case, and so the referral is issued after the Title IX investigation is complete. But if it's a student with disabilities, they would continue to receive educational services at Positive Pathways for 180 days. Or somewhere else, if it's appropriate, if a different placement is appropriate.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. And Chair Jacobs, I just wanted to add one more thing to your prior question, if I could. I just wanted to let you know that staff actually, when we're looking at facts of a case, they take what they get at the DTM. The only time we go back and get additional information is if the parent, while at the DTM or anytime thereafter, says, makes another allegation that perhaps there was another student involved or another student might have information, or maybe their child was being bullied. So we will go back and follow up on what the parent has told us. But staff actually doesn't go back and look for more information. Once the Level Four is submitted, that's what the area administrators look at. So I just wanted to make that clear as well.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Chair Jacobs. Is that it for you?
At this time, yes. Thank you.
Okay. Member Gallo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to circle back to the full exclusion. So the full exclusion, the students are still allowed to go to Positive Pathways? Are just, just the, are ESE students? Okay. So full exclusion from students means they are out of OCPS altogether and they've got to find another form of education? Correct. I want to go back, because it was, the last discipline case was a little confusing for the board. We weren't real sure about our role, what we were allowed to do and not allowed to do. So I appreciate the definition that was given today. I'm hoping that that will be put in policy so there's no more confusion moving forward. In relation to when things come before the board, I think anytime that a parent disagrees with the administrative hearing officer, by the way, who, who acts as the administrative hearing officer? Who, who does that usually go to?
It goes to Mr. D. Rowland. And then-
And I'm sorry, who's that?
D. Rowland, he's our administrative hearing officer.
So he's employed by OCPS?
He's a consultant.
He's a consultant, but he's paid by OCPS?
Yes.
Okay. I, I think that anytime that a parent disagrees, especially if even full expulsion, if a child's being sent to Positive Pathway, I think it's perfectly acceptable that if a parent doesn't agree with the outcome of that hearing, that it comes before the board. When it comes before the board, the board's at a disadvantage because we're usually briefed as a board prior to a discipline hearing. We're told that it might come before the board. We're given a background on it, but we're only given, we're only given it from the point of OCPS, that this is the administrative hearing, this is what we found, this is what we've determined. We can't ask questions. I could say, well, what am I going to hear? What is a parent going to say? What, what kind of questions are going to come before the board to try to prepare ourselves for these type of hearings? But that's it. So that's all we know until the parent or the child gets up here to discuss it with the board. At that time, if we have questions that we need answers to because it's not clear on what direction we should take, I think it's appropriate for us to ask it. And I'm sorry, I'm sorry that if it wasn't covered at the administrative hearing, I'm sorry if that evidence wasn't produced at the administrative hearing. I still think it's our job to do, do justice, to ask those questions. And I think that they should be allowed and I think they should be answered. So I just want to put that out there. I don't know what we could do to policy, to create policy, to do that. Other districts, and maybe we need to look at the policy as a whole, because other districts are more involved in the discipline hearings than we are here in Orange County. I know Seminoles, I think, have the opportunity to go to all discipline hearings. I'm not saying that that, that's what this board wants to do or should do, but maybe being briefed on the more serious ones so we don't get to the point that we have a young man having a conversation with us and we're asking questions instead of listening to him, we're having a discussion on the board on what's appropriate, what's not appropriate, what we can hear, what we can't hear, evidence that's been produced, evidence that hasn't been produced. I just don't think that's a good use of our time or, or the parents' times. So I just wanted, I wanted to get my two cents out of that before I forgot. I agree with the chair on the disruption when she said it seems to be a different category. And I, and I know that we define, so we do define disruption. And don't we, isn't it, isn't disruption defined differently, maybe for a Level Three or a Level Four? And is that, is that definition clear?
In, in reading from our code for a major disruption on campus, we give some examples that are, I mean, they come exactly from Cessar. So the offense may include, but it's not limited to inciting a riot, initiating a false fire alarm, incidents that result in closing the cafeteria, fights involving multiple participants that disrupt the campus, and/or incidents that prevent students from proceeding to the next class.
Okay. All right. We might want to look, look at that. And I know this has come up before, but I'm going to, I'm switching gears a little bit. When we expel a child or we send them to Positive Pathways, they're immediately withdrawn from OCPS. And there seems to be some downtime, especially if there's administrative hearing coming forth or there's a Title IX, or maybe that's handled differently. But I don't know that we do a really good job in making sure that that child is still being educated. I think we saw that in our last, a last student who came before us. It's almost like, other than testing, that we were allowed him to come back into school to do, once we withdrew him, if the parent didn't agree with Positive Pathways, we kind of left him there. Like, we're just kind of leaving him out there to hang until it's all figured out. And that's a lot of loss in instruction for that student. So I think we need to look at policies or some type of processes that we could put into place, whether we're sending work home, we're doing tutoring, but we can't just let that child not have any education while we're trying to figure it out. And this isn't the first time that I've heard this happening. It happened last year and the year before. I was raising questions to Dr. Bolder, like, what do we do with the children once we expel them until we figure out, how is that child learning? How do we make sure that that child's getting the services they need? How are we making sure that that child's getting maybe some of the mental services that they need? We just can't kind of leave them out there not receiving any services.
So when a student is fully schooled, the student is still tied to the school until they even have the 120 hearing or they come to the board. So the student still has an opportunity to receive classwork assignments from the school for a full exclusion.
So when the child is expelled and it's gone through the process, and they go through the administrative hearing, and then it's got to come before the board, the, the parent wants to challenge it before the board. During the last case, we were told that that child, the minute he was expelled, was off the records at that high school. Like, he was out of the records, he couldn't get his work, the mom was upset that he couldn't get his work, and it had to wait till it come before us before something happened. Now, I know that the parent had the right to do something differently. The parent could have chose to put him in Positive Pathways. Most private schools won't take you, by the way. If you're expelled from a public school, they're not letting you come to a private school. So they're allowed to choo, to choose another alternate form of education. But what if they don't? What if they're waiting? Then what do we do to make sure that this child is still being educated?
So Ms. Gallo, when, when a student has that situation and then they are withdrawn and they are placed at Positive Pathways, the reason that is done consistently is, it aligns with the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, actually, and how that consistency is done. So if we had a student, for instance, that is special ed, and they had their Level Four and it was determined to not be a manifestation of their disability, they would be placed in the alternative, interim alternative education center, which would be Positive Pathways. Federal law states that in that time, whereas usually if a parent disagrees with an IEP placement, stay put would be their last local school, when it comes to disciplines, stay put is actually that alternative center. So if a parent was to disagree with the discipline placement for a special needs student to Positive Pathways, during the pendency of the proceeding, say with the Division of Administrative Hearings, federal law states that their placement would also be at the interim alternative education center. And then the remedy would be to return them back to their local school. So in that, in aligning with that, when a student, it's determined that they go to Positive Pathways, that is in line with federal law for even special needs students, that you go to Positive Pathways pending the outcome of the discipline procedures, and then you would be returned. So for consistency purposes, that's why that's done. If we had our general ed students allowed to continue receiving work, say, and I'm just going to pick ABC High School, during the pendency of, you know, going through the hearing process, the problem then comes up that if we have a student that, say, has an IEP and needs special education services, their only option is Positive Pathways, whereas a general education student could do Positive Pathways or get work from their local high school. So for consistency purposes, you have everybody going to Positive Pathways or choosing their alternative options so that there is consistency between all of our students because certainly if a parent chose to not send their kid to Positive Pathways and they were special needs and they needed all of their ESE services, then we wouldn't really have an option to provide those remotely either.
And I appreciate that. And I understand the need for consistency. And I'm not even suggesting that the work come from their home high school. I'm just saying, I don't know if there needs to be follow-up or we have to ensure that the child is enrolled in Florida Virtual. There just has to be, something needs to be done. And maybe we need to brainstorm with a policy or brainstorm an idea on how we make sure that we don't lose the kids in the time that it takes to make sure they're properly placed.
One of the other options that we have been looking at is also since COVID happened, we are now able to look at students that have been withdrawn and are not going somewhere else to explore truancy options for them. So that is something that we could look at as far as exploring truancy options for those students that don't enroll somewhere else so that we could keep track of them.
Board Member Gallo, it really is a matter of making sure our schools then are following up on that and that we can ensure that if they haven't enrolled, they're aware, like Florida Virtual may be an option, there are some private schools that will take them. And if not, then we can also remind them that if you're not in school, you could be truant. And so we, we talked about that last week as an additional support to make sure children are not out there attached to a school.
Awesome. That'd be great. Yep. There was just some type of process in place so we make sure that the child is somewhere and we don't lose track. That would be great. I have more questions, but I'm going to send it back to my other board members and I'll circle back around. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question about the withdrawal as well because maybe it's related to the situation. But I remember in several occasions on having parents calling me in reference and of having their children withdraw from the school when they're, after the 10-day suspension, even though they're waiting for hear, for the hearing and even though they wanted to participate in the school board. I know that, you know, the situation were addressed by the pre, at that moment, Vasquez. But where in the steps that we were mentioned, we have that procedure specified about withdrawing? When specifically does the school can withdraw the student when they know they're going to go to Positive Pathways, but we are not sure if during the hearing, everything is going to change? Or might change, not necessarily.
So I'll just say, schools cannot withdraw until after the DTM because they are not aware of our decision. Our decision is not predetermined, is not shared with the school until we go to the DTM. So at the DTM, if the, if the area administrator verifies the Level Four, we instruct the school that you will withdraw the student at this time. If the parent agrees, we're going to transfer them to Positive Pathways. If the parents say, I want to do Florida Virtual School, they withdraw. We explain home education. Or if a parent say, I'm going to go to private school, we withdraw at the table. Prior to the DTM, a student should not be withdrawn for discipline.
And, and how can we review that information with the principals? I think that there is a misunderstanding because it's happening a lot. And, and, you know, I think that maybe because they know that they're going to go to Positive Pathways, maybe they think that that's the best way to do it. But sometimes, you know, it's harder for them, specifically, specifically when they are seniors. I'm thinking about, the last case was, he was a senior. And it's hard because imagine that type of case in the middle of the last semester.
If I may, Board Member Lopez, that is something that the team can monitor because you can see the withdrawal code. And I'm not aware that they're being withdrawn before the DTM. I know that they're withdrawn after the DTM, and that's when there's a lot of that angst. But if you have specific situations, we can look into them. They can actually see the, the code, the withdrawal code on there. And if they're preparing for a DTM, they would address that with the school that they shouldn't have withdrawn them. So we're, if you have specific cases, we're more than happy to look into it.
So do we have, so that type of information? I know that we saw in the forms that we have it in Spanish. But do we have all the contracts signed by students and parents in Spanish as well?
Yes.
Because I also see one, one document in Spanish in, in the forms that we have in the, in the binder.
Right. On the backside of those documents that are blank, they should be in Spanish also. We just didn't copy the backside.
Okay.
So our documents are in Spanish and other languages.
So every, every document related to this type of procedures with-
All discipline documents.
We have it in Spanish, Asian Creole.
Arabic, Vietnamese as well.
Perfect.
And Portuguese.
Thank you so much.
And then to answer your previous question, it's in, it's detailed in step nine where it says, if the decision is made by the area administrator to verify the Level Four and the consequence is an alternative placement such as Positive Pathways, section 1,006.08 will be invoked and the student will be administratively placed at the alternative school with Orange County.
Thank you.
Thank you. Member Felder.
Thank you, Chair, Melissa Byrd. I'd like to thank you all for your very thorough report. It's always very interesting to me when we deal with Code of Conduct. Because once you spend all that time and you do what you do, then invariably, I guess, as Murphy's Law, something, another something comes up that we have to go back again and revamp. But my concern, and most of the things I was interested in, Board Member Gallo brought it up, in terms of sometimes information, if parents, I'm thinking about the last case. I'm wondering about our check and balance to make sure that schools are really being fair with parents. Because apparently, without my having to go through, reiterate the entire conversation, but it appeared that the parent believed that there was some unfairness as it relates to how her child was disciplined in terms of the rights and privileges. And when, again, as Member Gallo said, there were some things we didn't know until it happened, and then it forced us to begin to ask- And then it forced us to begin to ask the student all of these questions. And I just think in terms of transparency, most of us that ran for this office, we talked about being transparent to the community. That's why we told them they could trust our voice because we would be transparent. It's important that we as a board, and I believe, I know that I'm speaking for myself, but that we are, there's clarity, that we're clear on, on what the cases are. And we don't, we're not here at the board and then getting something extra. Then we're having to make some decisions. And then we found out that it rolls over into operational and it's not rolling over into governance. So I, I'm just hoping, again, as Board Member Gallo said, maybe we need to revisit policy in terms of where our jurisdiction lies as it relates to decisions. The other thing is my real concern, because I get calls, as other board members do, when a situation occurs and the parents feel like they have not been given the due diligence. And again, I understand that there's always three sides, or two sides to every story, then the truth. And a lot of times, we don't get the truth until it comes out and then we go, oh, why didn't you say that to me? As a board member. But also on the, in the defense of the parent, I know people, the emotions are heated and, and everything and people saying stuff. But I do think that there needs to be a serious check and balance to make sure that the schools administration, the schools involved are really treating the parents with due respect in terms of what is happening. Because I, I'm very concerned that sometimes when children are being disciplined, that we don't get full disclosure until they come. And then they tell us something that we didn't get when we're being briefed on what this parent's gonna say. Then when they get here, something totally different or more involved. And then we have to react to what we actually are hearing and not what we were told prior. So I'm, I'm concerned about that. And, and Superintendent Vasquez just explained to me about the, the Cessar levels three that is different. And I said, that's very confusing. She says, yeah, I know it is. Because we're thinking that this is a level four and they say, no, that's not what we're doing. Cessar doesn't call it that. So I think maybe we may need to have another workshop or something that we can really delve into some of these policies and understand exactly what we have jurisdiction on and what we're supposed to do. Because if we're not clear, then parents who come to us are not going to be clear. But I, I just wanted to make sure that, I guess my major concern is a check and balance, that to make sure that school administrators are doing their due diligence as it relates to how they handle the parents of those children that are being disciplined for whatever thing they've done, whatever offense that they have made, they're getting the due diligence. Because in past, I can think of two instances, I won't call it from the days because it was solved, but they were not given. They, that timely fashion that you say they're supposed to, parents are supposed to know then a time when they have time to respond to the discipline that the district is giving. They were supposed to be given 14 days, they weren't given that. They only, a day, they got a call. So I'm just, my concern more than anything is a check and balance. We have a good policy, we do, guys do a great job. But then after you do it, after you present it, who is making sure? Other than board members, because I will try to find out, that the schools are actually doing what they're supposed to be doing as it relates to getting, making sure parents know. Now, they ignore it, that's another thing. But to know, say they have 14 days and you only tell them a day, that happened. They had a day to respond. That's not fair. But it was resolved, the situation was fixed. And, and I appreciate, I know the help that Ms. Joyner came to my office and gave me some explanation, helped me understand some of the things clearer. And I appreciate that. But suppose I didn't have her, suppose that didn't happen, I would have just not known. But she took it upon herself to explain exactly to me what the situation was. But the parent was not given that. But it got solved. The Superintendent Emeritus, Dr. Jenkins, called me, it got resolved, it was fixed. But I'm just saying, if there's not a real good check and balance to make sure the schools are following the policies, then you gonna have parents coming and they'll, and something will be said that was not originally stated. And then we're looking like, oh, really? So what did you do? Now what happened? No. That's my, that's all I wanted to say. I have that concern. You wanna respond?
Yes.
Okay.
So, parents can request copies of the witness statements and everything that's in the DTM packet and it will be redacted. Also, at the day of the DTM, parents have a parent packet. With everything the area administrators have in their packet, again, it's redacted. So if they don't get it prior to the DTM, they definitely will have it a couple of days before the DTM happens. That's one of our questions to our parents, did you receive a parent packet?
Say that, one more thing. I had a parent in a situation that they were refused. They asked about the witness statement and they were told, no, you didn't need to know that. So explain it to me. If they asked to see the other kid's statements or if they, I mean, what right does the parents have when it comes to the witness statements of an incident that involves their child?
If their student's receiving discipline, whether it's a level two, three, or four.
It was a four, level they were about to get expelled.
Parents have a right to the witness statements, but those witness statements will be redacted.
Okay, so this parent was refused that. So that's why I said prior to my conversation just now, the check and balance to make sure that administration at different schools are allowing them that right. And in some cases, they don't.
So then the check and balance will come at the DTM because we make sure parents have a parent packet. We make sure they have all the evidence in their packet that we have in our packets. And then as far as the 14 days, the 14 days is when they can have an administrative hearing. So the 14 days start at the DTM. So if a parent wants an administrative hearing, they have 14 days from the date of that DTM to call our office to request an administrative hearing.
And we at the district will make sure that the schools do that. If they don't, then there's some recourse that you all give, right?
The DTM, they call our office, the area administrators, they call our assistants to schedule the DTM. Once we have the DTM, it leaves the school and now it belongs to the area administrators. So if they request an administrative hearing, our office will take care of scheduling the administrative hearing and making sure the parent is aware of the date and time of the administrative hearing.
Okay, all right, thank you.
That's it, Member Felder?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm next up to speak and I, I just brought up another question. I think, you know, being on this board a few years now and seeing cases come before us, I think where our, where the angst is for the school board when these cases come up is, is the issue of what the staff calls consistency. I know that this board has had a lot of issues with ignoring things that we're not supposed to pay attention to because it's, you know, wasn't in the hearing as, as Mr. Palmarini referenced and Member Gallo talked about. And I think that's where we have a hard time is this whole concept of consistency. And I understand the reason for consistency and why it's important. But my issue with that is that these children are not, you know, consistent. I guess, I don't know how else to phrase that. But every child is different and every circumstance that led a child to this place where they're in this discipline hearing is different. Like the case that we heard recently, the way it was presented to us and the, and the, and the things that we heard from the parent were that there were issues leading up to this student losing his temper that day, which we all acknowledged was wrong. But that is a different, I, I still stand by my statement that that is a different circumstance than a child, than a, which I've had in some of my schools before where it's a outside the school gang-related issue and it's a group of kids that have talked and conspired and they're gonna all work together to jump a group and then they get in a huge fight and they even attack SROs. And, you know, there's like these hu- huge campus disruption. It's a lot different than a kid who possibly, and it may not, may not be the case, but possibly has been, you know, had circumstances where there was bullying or teasing going on and they don't know how to handle it and they lose their temper. And they make a mistake. And it's a mistake and it needs to be acknowledged. But I just think that sometimes circumstances are different. And when we apply a standard consequence to every single case and we tried it and we, and then they come before us and they say, well, you don't, you don't need to, you don't take into consideration prior discipline. You don't take into consideration outside, you know, circumstances, whatever. It's what this child did and it's, and it, this is the consequence we apply to all these cases. So this is what we have to do. I don't, I honestly, in, in my opinion, as an, as a person on this board who's been elected to represent my community, I don't think that that's the best thing for children. And everything I do on this board, I try to, I try to preface that with what's the right thing for children. And I don't think pulling a child out of school for 180 days or 90 days even because they made one mistake one time that I just, I, I feel like we are supposed to be in the business of educating and I don't think that that is helping a child always. So that's, I think that's where our angst is, is that I've always had concern over this whole, you know, like consistency issue with discipline. And, and I, and I, and I've been explained to me, it's been explained to me many times. It's not fair if one child has a parent that comes and advocates and another child doesn't and this child doesn't get the dis- I get all that. And I understand that it, it makes the disciplining of children more difficult when you have to put in, you know, if, if people are putting in their own personal interpretations on things. I, I get all that. I still think that these are individual children and their lives and their feelings and their emotions and their educational struggles, which that's another thing. A lot of these kids are struggling academically, might have unidentified learning disabilities. There's a lot of reasons why kids act out. And I think that it's our duty, when they do act out, to really try to dig deep and figure out what's going on and figure out how we can help this child and pulling them out of school and putting them in another school that may be a great fit for them, may not be a great fit for them, but we're putting all of them in the same, in the same place. I don't know that that's always the best thing to do for kids. So that's where I think, that's where my trouble sometimes comes in. And I, and I think that when cases come before us and then we have a parent here telling us, you know, well, this is what's going on or this is, you know, why, what led to this. I think that there's, I, I don't know how we are supposed to be expected to not take that into consideration. I don't really know what the answer is to that, but I just needed to get that out. My, I have a question about positive pathways. We do not provide transportation, correct?
We do.
Do we?
Yes.
All over the district? How does that, how does that work exactly? How do we provide transportation if it's like one student out in a faraway spot?
Exactly. It's, it's a bit complicated, but we do provide transportation. In some cases, we work with one of our vendors. If it's someone that's, you know, far out so that they're not on, on the bus for a very long period of time. And there are some cases, especially now that we have a shortage, a bus driver shortage, where they're on for a prolonged period of time. But we've always provided transportation for students to go to positive pathway. That is the placement we're required to provide it.
Okay. And what sort of, do we offer any other type of mental health counseling besides, you know, like our normal mental health counseling that we do in our regular schools? Is there something different that's provided at positive pathways for our children that are placed there?
I'm going to let Mr. Moody speak to that. And I believe I mentioned in this at the other board meeting, if you haven't visited positive pathways, you, you definitely need to. I believe part of, of what your mental image is of positive pathway and what it really is and all the supports, it's small classes. There's behavioral supports available to them. And so I think that, that would be important for all of you since that is one of the options, for you to at least be familiar with the school. Mr. Moody?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Ms. Byrd, Member Byrd, great questions. Positive Pathways does offer behavioral support. We have two mental health counselors onsite in addition to the traditional school counselors. So they all, students are afforded opportunities for one-on-one, small group counseling as well, as well as connecting them with outside agencies if needed. So we have in addition two mental health counselors onsite.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I, I have been out there, I'm sorry. I did not mean any disrespect to Positive Pathways. I have been there, I think it is a wonderful facility. And I think that it's, I'm not, I think that that's, it's great. I just, you know, not comfortable with always automatically placing students there when sometimes I feel like there are circumstances that need to be addressed outside of that one particular incident that that child did, so.
I understand your concern. And certainly, over the course of the last several years, we've modified consequences to address board members' concerns about the duration, the, the offense. I do want to caution this board that when you start to look at individual circumstances, you are opening the district up to OCR complaints, Title IX complaints. Remember there are victims involved in these cases. The last discipline case we talked to you had three employees that were hurt. And I, what I think we need to do is make sure that we look at what's happening before, making sure our children are getting the supports that they need. If they're being bullied, that we are addressing the bullying issues. If there are mental health or social, emotional issues, that children are getting access and families to those resources. But you have very few cases that come to you. I believe in the incident that we talked about last time, in order for us to ensure that we are being consistent, then we would go back to any other case that was similar to that. And then we would issue that same complaint, that same consequence to all of those so that we ensure that there is equity in our district. Several years ago, the district was, it was pointed out that we were suspending students with disabilities, specifically children of color. And we had to do a deep dive into our data and put in protocols in place so that we were not suspending children, more children with disabilities. And so I certainly understand the heartache, especially when we have families that are coming here. And we do need to do our due diligence, as Board Member Felder said, to ensure our schools are following those steps. We are going to take the same presentation and make sure that our principals and assistant principals hear it. I think it's very well done so that we outline those steps. This is also something that could be made available to all of our families so that they know these are the steps that take place, these are your rights. these are the steps that take place, these are your rights, uh, within that, and we will continue to seek ways to improve that process. But we need to be careful that we are, we are very consistent. And the number of cases that come to you versus the total number of cases when you look at the matrix and the full exclusions, it's a very, very small percentage. And we certainly don't want any child to fall through the cracks. But we, we have come to this point of consistency, um, over time because we are a large urban district with two hundred and five schools, over two hundred and six thousand students. And we need to me- make sure that we are equitable in how we are, um, uh, discipling students and the consequences that we are, uh, sending out.
Thank you. Um, I do appreciate that. I, I appreciate that explanation. Um, I have a kind of a different question now. Um, how is the referral information data recorded? Um, is every offense, um, on the dis- every discipline referral level one through four entered into Skyward by the schools when, when they happen?
Yes.
Okay. So in theory, it should be, we should be able to look at data? Um, like how many, you know, if we wanted to see how many Level Four Hs there were, three, whatever, whatever level, even Level Ones, we should be able to pull that up? For the district, right?
Yes.
Okay. Is, is anyone, I, I kinda wanna piggyback on what, uh, Member Lopez said about our families of children that, um, English is not their first language. I know you said that you have all the forms in other languages. That first discipline referral that's filled out, that goes home with the child, is that sent home in the student's home language usually, or is that just usually in English?
We only have the referral in English.
Okay. Um, but then they'll get a letter, the letter they get will be in their language?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and the only reason I bring that up is I just had a meeting over at the Hope Community Center and, you know, they, listening to the stories of our families, especially our immigrant families, our migrant families, um, and the struggles they have communicating with the schools and, and really how uncomfortable they are, um, coming into schools and, and approaching schools. I think this would definitely, this is definitely a situation where that child's not gonna have, um, the parent's not gonna have any idea how to, how to help their child and probably wouldn't even feel comfortable if, if they didn't, if they did have a problem with the discipline referral. So, um, I just wanna make sure that there's someone reaching out to these families, um, and just saying, you know, "Do you need any help understanding all this?" Or, you know, especially are those families, like, is there anyone we can, can we talk to you anymore to help you understand the process, what's going on? Cause I think that this is, it's very wordy. There's a lot of information here and I think it's difficult for anyone to understand, much less someone that doesn't speak the language.
When we have families that reach out and we do have families that reach out, um, to our office once their student receives the Level Four, because you're right, they don't understand the process. And, um, we explain the process and like was mentioned earlier, if we, if their English is not their language, we do use our, um, language line to make sure they understand the process when they reach out to our office.
Okay. Thank you so much. Um, next up is, uh, Dr. Castor Dental.
Thank you ma'am chair. Um, first, thank you for this, the presentation and I, I appreciate the details. Um, it is timely. Um, I, the discipline matrix that you shared was helpful. And the training of staff, I know is critical, especially as staff, um, we, we continue to get new APs, new deans, and we need to make sure that everyone understands this process. That's the first step. Um, so I appreciate that that's ongoing. Um, and I, um, I don't know if this is new or if this is just new to me, that there are five area administrators that review, um, the uh, referrals, uh, for consistency or the, the outcomes. Um, and I appreciate that, that, that lets me know that when it comes to the board, that there has been this, uh, a much deeper vetting and oversight. Not just for equity and consistency, but what are we looking at? So I, I appreciate that. I know that some of the times we've had parents come to the board, um, it, it seems that they have a fear of Positive Pathways. And they're not always saying that this is, that, you know, my child is innocent. They don't like that. And I, I don't know if it's presented as a consequence, when it should be provided as an opportunity. And it is, I know it has a reputation, you know, Positive Pathways, you don't wanna go there. Um, and I think we need to address that. Um, it may be helpful, since not every parent can just drive across the county to get there, if we have a, an orientation video where we show what it looks like, we show the students in their small classes, we show the orderly transition of change of class, and we see kids in, you know, a dress code. Because I think that would be very reassuring, um, if you can talk about some of the resources that are there. And just reassure the parents that this is a, a safe place and that teaching goes on, learning goes on. I was very, um, pleased to see that when I was going around. And you know that when, you know, a board member goes to a school, everyone's on their best manners, right? Everyone gets the heads up, "Hey, just so you know, keep those hallways clean and bulletin boards updated and, and everybody be on your best behavior." But the kids don't always follow those rules and this is a prime example of kids who are not really gonna put on a dog and pony show for you. And they were excellent. In every class I toured, the students were engaged, participating in their lessons. And it could not have been a better, um, environment. And I think that that is important to share with parents and the community, um, just so that they have an idea. I think that can help, um, alleviate some of the fear and angst and concern. Um, so there's that. And also, um, presenting it as an option, like here, your child, uh, the consequence is to be expelled. And we know that your child is not, um, served well when they're at home by themselves, not doing anything, not engaged, not supervised. Here is an option for you that we recommend, that is a resource, you know, we, you can go to Positive Pathways. This is why it was created. So that you do have a lot of adults around, you do have resources. Your children will be supervised and learning and then can come back and they're on track. In addition to, they could go to Florida Virtual School or homeschooling or private school, but um, I do appreciate the discussion that we're having on parents' rights and students' rights and and how we ensure those when there is a disruption or an infraction. I do know of a friend whose daughter brought a vape pen to her middle school, it's a private school, last week. And once they found out, she'd been a student there for a long time, they found out, they said goodbye. There was no recourse. They don't follow up. They, they don't have a, a hearing, they don't have anything. They said, "Sorry, you're on your own." So our public schools do provide a lot of oversight and, and making sure our kids get what they need. And we do follow them the best we can. I know when they, um, when they go to Positive Pathways or they are excluded. I wanna make sure that we, there's a step in that process where when the parent makes a decision about where they're gonna send their child, um, whether it's Florida Virtual or Positive Pathways or whatever their plan is, that we, at the school site, keep that and we, we remain in contact with them. I don't know if it's like a, a monthly checkup? If there's a way, or maybe a social worker can be following the family and just making sure that, that that child is not lost? Um, I just wonder, I, I know we have a service, or I mean, we have social workers, maybe we can have that added to someone's oversight, just a check-in. Also, let me see. My, my notes are pretty messy. I just write as people write things, I have it all over the place. Um, I know that we're talking about consistency and that, that is very hard when you're looking at an individual student. And there are other factors involved. Um, and it almost sounds, seems like our consistency efforts are almost like a zero tolerance? Or that we're so restricted in our consequences? But we do have a, a range. We have, um, a range of consequences that I know you do take those factors into consideration. You do look at, um, you know, how extreme the, the, um, action was. And you do look at that range. It's not always Positive Pathways, it's not always we're going to expel or exclude you. And I know we get so many, um, waivers on our matrix that we get, our discipline matrix of all the waivers. So many of our kids are redirected or are getting counseling. And, uh, it's very rare that we actually have a full exclusion brought to the board and even more rare when a parent comes to us. But I do know that is, it is important to consider a student's, uh, unique situations. Um, I know there was one example of a third grade student at one of the elementary schools in my district who had been homeless and had behavior problems. And the school was really investing in building trust and relationships with this child. And then, um, the student did something at a bus stop. I don't remember exactly what. And if you were to look at that behavior by itself, it would have afforded the student, he would have had to go to Positive Pathways. And that's what they looked at. They just went down the list, you know, the whole discipline steps. And they could not consider that the student had been homeless and was really starting to, to bond. And now he was taken, he went to Positive Pathways. And I had, uh, guidance council reach out to me and say, "Isn't there, can't we consider a student's unique situation?" Cause I don't think the Positive Pathways is the best for this student. And at that time, there really wasn't a way to include that, cause I think that was a very important piece. And, uh, I wondered, I remember I, I mentioned to Dr. Jenkins, is it possible to have, um, if it, if a staff member or a teacher wants to appeal the district decision? Because they do have more information about the student that is important. Um, if there is a way to do that. And I don't know, um, where in the process that would come into play. So if we were to look at something else like that, do they have to wait until they get to the board? I don't know, cause the parent was not really able to advocate for the child. Um, but the teachers were. And I don't know, there wasn't anything we could do at the time. So I don't know how that could play in. But that's an, that's an example of, of a student whose unique situation would, uh, affect the outcome. And the outcome affects the students even more than it would have another student. So, um, you don't have to answer it right now. Just something that we need to consider. Also, when it comes to, and this is my last point, when it comes to parents understanding, um, the process, even if they speak English and are highly educated, the process is still intimidating. And, um, very institutional. And we bring the weight of the whole district to a meeting with a parent. They feel that. I wonder if there's something that we can do that can kind of lessen that? Maybe, and I'm looking at this little pamphlet, the code, how easy this is to look at? If we could find something like this that outlines the steps for a parent in really simple language? Not just English, but simple. So that it's, you know, we, we don't talk about administrative hearing. Or if we do, we define what happens there. I'm not even sure what happens at the administrative hearing. But it does sound like, um, "I better bring my lawyer." I don't have a lawyer, but it sounds like I'm gonna go and I'm gonna lose. So I don't know what's gonna happen there. I don't know how that would benefit me if I was a parent. So if we can share that process with parents um, and let them know when they can present information. Or, you know, they can say, "Look, we've talked to all of his teachers, they, they have a problem with this recommendation." Um, then when it gets to the board, maybe we can have a real, um, appeal. Um, and not just because someone was afraid of Positive Pathways or they, um, didn't think it was fair, but that they really do have, um, something else that we need to consider that's unique. Um, anyway, those are my thoughts and we can work those in later. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I appreciate that. Did you look, Superintendent, you looked like you had something to say?
I had written down that we could put together a video, um, that is in layman's terms, in different languages, so that that is something that's part of um, the information that's provided to the parents. But I love the pamphlet idea as well because it's, it's easy, it's quick, so. Great suggestion. No, for the dis- no, for the discipline process.
Mm-hmm. That could go home with the Level Four discipline form. Yeah. Good idea. Uh, Member Gallo.
Thank you ma'am chair. Um, I, I, I have visited Pa- Positive Pathways too. It's been a couple of years now, but I, I had nothing but good things to say about Positive Pathways after I, I toured it and left it. I do think that we provide valuable resources for those students who need it the most. And I do feel like it does pr- provide us an opportunity to meet their needs and help them get back on track and ready to enter, um, back to their home schools. So I, I I have nothing but nice things to say about Positive Pathway. So I agree with Member, um, Castor Dental there. I, I do, I do wanna piggyback on something before I ask, I do have a few questions before I, um, before I get into that about what Member Castor Dental said. You know, we talk a lot about equity, equity is in, it's one of our, our tenets of our strategic plan. And when you think about equity, you know, equity is defined as fair and just. It's, it's about being fair, being just, so that the resources that you provide give an equal outcome. And I think that what Member Castor Dental just subs- just provided the information about that third grader, I don't know that we can honestly and with good heart say that that third grader had an equal outcome. Because their circumstances were different, their life experiences were different, the trauma that they have sustained has been different. And when we try to be consistent, and I understand the need to be consistent. Um, but being consistent is, i- it is almost like a zero tolerance policy. We box everybody in regardless of their status, regardless of the trauma sustained, regardless of their home environment into one box. And we act accordingly. And I don't know what the answer is, cause we've gotta create a balance. We can't have discipline issues on our campuses. When I was knocking on doors, as I've mentioned before, it was a number one thing that teachers told me, we've got to get this discipline under control. We have to make sure that our schools are safe for our educators and staff. We can't have kids cursing at our teachers. Um, we've got to provide an environment where our, our educators feel safe and our staff feel safe to teach and to be and to educate. And if we can't provide a safe environment, then nobody's learning. So I recognize, recognize that the balance that we've gotta create. Um, I know that the district has wonderfully intelligent people that probably will come up with some some good policies or good solutions to what we're facing, cause we, we do have some challenges ahead of us. But I, I did, I did wanna say that. I just think that sometimes being consistent is in direct conflict with being equitable or providing equity.
That's just my two cents. Um, speaking of the, the hearing, the administrative hearings, parents who can't afford an attorney, what are their options? I know that we allow them to bring in attorneys and we have to be notified, but what, I mean, that's a huge expense if they can't afford. Do we provide options? Do we, do we provide any type of information at places they could go to get an advocate? Or anything that may be less expensive, or we, they're just kind of out there on their own to figure it out?
Correct.
They're out there on their own to figure it out.
Okay. That does, as member Castro Dental mentioned, that does put them at a huge disadvantage, cause it is kind of scary walking into a room.
So can I, if I could just clarify something, when we're uh, at the administrative hearing, our attorneys are not present. It's just, no ma'am. It's just the area administrator, the school is there, and the parent. Now, at a 120 hearing, okay, then uh, um, Sarah Corin or Kopeski will show up and the parent may bring an attorney if they like. Sometimes a parent will bring, as I said earlier, a cousin. I've had um, family members that work in different districts and, and they're familiar with uh, school board policies and discipline. So we don't stop a parent from bringing anyone that they'd like to, to help them and, you know, maybe to ask questions. But at our regular admin hearings, there are no attorneys present.
Okay. So, so at the 120, they're still, they still have to fi- provide? Either come alone or find someone that, that has some knowledge that can come with them. And if they don't, if English is their native language, do we provide interpreters at those hearings?
Definitely.
Awesome. Thank you. Um. So does every secondary school have a pass? Are they, do we have a pass at every secondary school?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. And then just to circle back, uh, when a level four, when we're taking a, a statement from one of our elementary students, I know that, that children have the right to refuse to write a statement or to give a statement. A lot of times those statements are recorded by an, uh, by an adult. Little ones, when, they're gonna be, they're gonna be compliant, right? If, if an adult asks them to do something, we, we raise our children to be respectful, to be compliant, to do as they're told. Um, I, I still have an issue with us taking statements from little kids. I still have an issue with us taking a statement from little kids without parents present. I just, I, little kids, they, they change their mind. Sometimes they don't understand. We're talking about five, six, seven, eight-year-olds. Um, and once you get to third grade, the consequences for that third through fifth get higher than our level RK through two. And so for us to be taking statements that are recorded by adults, um, I, I just don't think it should happen without the parents being called or at least being given the opportunity to come down as that child gives that statement. And I, I've been public, I've said that before, so that's nothing new. And then the referral forms. I know that we've had several instances, I think in the last discipline hearing, where what was written on the refer- referral, referral form given to the parent was actually different than the refer- referral form that we saw as a board. So I know that we have those DTM meetings. Can referrals be changed after the fact, after it's handed to the child? And if so, how do we notify the parent that the referral's been switched? And when we have these DTM meetings, do we review the referral form to make sure that it was filled out properly?
The referral form that we receive, we receive the referral form when the DTM is requested. There should not be a referral issued after um, the DTM unless something happens at the DTM and we say we need to issue um, a new referral. So I'm not sure why there was two referrals issued.
Well, I, there wasn't two referrals. It was the, the referral that was given to the student was changed. So the referral that mom had was different than the referral that the school had. So it was changed after, I think the referral had been handed out to the student. And that's happened bef- I, that's, that's not the first time that has happened.
So I, if I may, um, I believe that um, board member Gallo is referring, it's the s- it's the same referral form, but they might have marked one particular offense, let's say 4P, and then it turns into they, maybe it's a 4P and it's a di- it's a different offense. And so can you speak to why, when they're originally giving the referral, it may have been marked one way and then changed on that same ref-
So I, from their, I guess preliminary investigation, especially when you're dealing with a 4P and maybe um, a 4O, um, cause they could be very, they could be similar. If they determined um, it was a 4P and then they went back and looked at, oh no, it should have been a 4O. Cause 4O is sexual harassment and 4P is sexual offenses. So sometimes if they are, could be in a hurry, they could mark the, the um, wrong offense. If they cross it out, then they should initial that they made a mistake when they issued the new referral.
Who, what, what is, is there a review, review process before the referral goes home with the student?
From the principal.
The, so the principals review all referrals before they're given to the student or the parent?
It is the principal's responsibility, yes.
Okay. Thank you. And then um, how, but how many DTMs do we usually have in a week? Do we know? Do we keep track of that? DTMs, how many DTMs do we usually have in a week? Do we know?
It can vary from um, from all five of us. It can vary from maybe fifteen to sixty.
In a week?
In a week.
Really, and, and I'm, I would say more because when, um, at times we've had twenty-five a week each, twenty, uh, so maybe up to a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred a week, depending on what's happening at our schools.
And so I'm, my point, okay, so up to sixty a week. And every single DTM has to have, who in it again? Who did, who, what? I know we had a slide on it. It has to have like four people. One of them's a social worker.
No, the five area administrators?
No, at present at the DTM. So you have the school principal, sometimes the guidance counselor is there. They can have a school psychologist. The dean or whoever was in charge of the investigation should be there. Um, if it's an IEP or a 504 student, then we um, invite positive pathways, uh, staff member to also join as well. As well as the parent guardian, and then they can bring whomever they want to the meeting.
Thank you. So I, and the point I'm trying to get to is so sixty times a week, we could be pulling a counselor and a school psychologist out of schools to, to go to DTM meetings?
Different, different schools, and different uh, guidance counselors, right? It would be the guidance counselor for that specific student.
So do we, do we know on average how many times a specific school? Like how many times a week a specific counselor or school psychologist is being pulled out for a DTM? What I'm trying to get at is, is are we impacting a counselor or a school psychologist's ability to do their job with other students, cause they're constantly being pulled out for a DTM? And I, and maybe, and I'm not saying that's not appropriate, I'm just curious.
So they're not required to attend? That's up to the principal's discretion. If the guidance counselor is busy doing something else, usually they're there um, to give information on grades or academics. If the parent asks that after the discipline meeting, um, they can always send paperwork um, to the parent, but they don't have to attend.
Okay. And then my last question is on the data that we received. The SASSER data. When you, when you talk about Florida, um, is that for all schools in Florida? Cause the, the numbers don't add up. So, um, do we report charter schools data for SASSER? Does that come through us? Yes. So the, the number, the Florida number that's in yellow, where do, where would those numbers come from and what's included in those numbers?
Sorry, um, those numbers come directly from the DOE's website. And so if you go on there and pull it up, they have um, a list for Florida and then we pulled the top six.
So that's for all schools in the state of Florida, including charters?
You could even go in there and break it down per school. We didn't do that here, cause that would be a very extensive list, but um, they do have that information available online.
And when it comes to, uh, we're looking at our numbers. And our numbers were in line, sometimes much larger than other large districts' numbers. Um, when you go down them, it, it almost looks like that not every district interprets the same definition for the same offense.
I can't speak for other districts, but based on the data I'm looking at, that's what it appears.
Okay. That's what I thought. Thank you so much. Those are my questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, member Gallo. Um, we have the uh, Chair, Chair Jacobs on the line.
Hey guys, can you hear me okay? Let me suggest Victor. Shoot, Victor, if you can mute your mic, see if it helps.
We can hear you.
Okay, I've got terrible echo. And I've changed the system. I've got so many questions. Um, I agree with the concerns of the several members of the board that all situations shouldn't be treated equally and look at the situation of the student. Including their uh, previous offenses and potentially what has happened um, in their personal. Victor, if you can hear me. I've, I've got some questions that I think would be helpful for us moving forward. I would, I'd really love to see a stack of best practices for um, serious discipline issues. Um, I'd like to see the effectiveness of positive pathways. Uh, and compare that relative to exclusions. How many of those students re-enter school? What is the when they re-enter school, is there a positive difference in their behavior? What's the graduation rate between those who go to positive path, those who are um, excluded? Uh, I also wanted to mention, this presentation, I got a presentation, much better. Thank you, Victor. Can you all hear me better now?
We can hear you great, Chair.
Can you all hear me at all?
Yes, we can hear you. Can you hear us?
I'm gonna assume that's a yes, but I can't hear you. I also received a presentation on Friday. It, you know, it's a holiday weekend. We get it Friday at noon. Um, on a personal note, it was my anniversary yesterday. And I took the time to read it completely. But the presentation before us today is a different presentation. It would be very, very helpful to the board if we could have access to these presentations um, sooner than, well, soon, certainly sooner than Friday. I'm not sure when the, the one on board docs was available, because I thought that's what was sent to us. But um, that would have aided, I think, a little bit in our conversation today. I, I wanna just circle back. I, I think, I think the board, I think this board, this district knows that equity and fairness are, are slightly different things that um, some children need more of some things and some children need more of others based on their background um, and their level of education and social and emotional development. Um, and I just keep thinking of a situation where a student may have lost his mother in the last week or so, and some kid at school makes a smart remark about his mother not realizing it, and he shoves him, and it turns into a bigger fight than imagined. And suddenly, he's um, a level four disruption of camp, on campus. And situations like that, I think, bear a different consequence. So I know how hard this is legally. I will tell you, in Orange County, um, we did develop a matrix, but we did build into that matrix, things like prior offenses, um, the level that you were at within the organization. Of course, we're talking about employees, and that's different, but I think there's room for that. And I think that's, I think that was most of my, my comments.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, member Cobert.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I appreciate the compassionate nature of the discussion that we're having.
And just for the record, now that Victor's muted, I can't hear you all.
Thank you, Chair. I guess you can't hear us, but thank you.
Um, I, I think, and most of my questions and comments have already been addressed. I'm gonna just circle back to where um, I offer some reinforcement from some of the comments. Um, I think we really are trying to uh, find balance, because I can go back several years to member Gallo's point, when teachers really were not feeling like discipline was meted out consistently. And teachers were not feeling safe in their classrooms. And we have to take that into consis- consideration as well. I think to Chair Jacobs and member Bird's point, I think an additional stage or option that would add some flexibility to the superintendent um, might be warranted, where we talk about somewhere between zero and ninety days. And that's where superintendent might be able to take into consideration some extenuating circumstances. I thought that uh, member Castro Dental's suggestions were really on point. That posi- positive pathways should be offered up as a bright alternative. I think even a video or tour that could be shown to parents, whether you offer them a tour of the school or a video tour that they can look and see that this is a bright alternative um, to expulsion. I thi- thought that was a great idea. And I also love the idea of um, social workers being tasked with a little bit of, of follow-up. We've just hired a lot of social workers, and I think that that's a, a great place to spend some time. Um, third, going back to SASSER, I think it would be very important to align all of our policies and definitions with the SASSER definitions. Uh, that way it, it's clear. I think that is where some of your data is inconsistent across the state. And if we all aligned our definitions to the SASSER definitions, it would be clear. I don't think we would have as many muddy situations. And it goes back to adding uh, to consistency. And final, um, just question, is how often are these SASSER trainings occurring for our administrators? I know, you know, we, we do have a lot of new ones, because as we keep growing and adding schools every year and, and movement. So new ones probably have the SASSER training, but how often do we go back and, and apply that for sitting deans or administrators?
So the area administrators do a discipline training every summer. And every summer they review any SASSER updates, any updates to the referral. Um, they go through how to fill all of that out. Um, and so I would, actually went back and looked at their presentations. And almost every year since 2015, they've had at least two to three slides on SASSER and, you know, what's changed, what to look for. Um, I also wanted to comment real quick. I was able to find, I was trying to find it when I was sitting here earlier, but I was able to find the SASSER definition for the major disruption on campus in our definition, and they do actually match. Um, we do have one extra sentence in there, but we do have the same language and we do have the same examples that they provide um, on SASSER guidance online.
Very good. Those are all my comments, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, member Cobert. Member Lopez.
Thank you for your patience. You know, that when, when board member Cobert was speaking, I wrote compassion. And I also wrote about trainings. So, okay. And I don't want to, to sound repetitive. So um, so the trainings for dean of disciplines, so do we provide, not only in, in the SASSER in, you know, requirements and content, but also related to culture related, you know, like to be culturally relevant, to be more sensitive to certain cases, EST, ELLs, um, emotional situations, um, uh, any type of, just to understand, you know, when we are having this child or this student at the front of a this dean of discipline, um, you know, do we have any, any recommendation, any training from the district to be accurate but compassionate with that student? So we can be very uh, proactive with the equity and fairness that all of our school board members um, were speaking today. That I think that we are very aligned on, on that um, opinion, on that, on that vision.
So we have actually two types of training. Well, the one in the summers for all administrators, assistant principals, administrators. But then we have a new dean training, cause sometimes we have brand-new deans that don't, aren't there in August when school starts. But typically towards the end of September, we have one specifically uh, that looks towards the new deans. And we spend a little bit more time with them. Now, we still do have to go over SASSER and the code. But we do mention the importance of building relationships, okay? So when you're at that school level and you are working with discipline, if you don't have a relationship with that student, if the students don't feel that you are there for them, it's very difficult. So um, that's something that we mentioned during our training, but it's also happening at the school. And I can speak to you from when I was an assistant principal at schools and my conversations with my deans. And, and talking to them about, well, let's be aware of the students that we have here, of our population, and, and how we can build those relationships. So it is something that is mentioned, although we focus on SESSOR with the deans, but definitely at the school level, those administrators are also having those conversations with their deans, their behavior specialists, anyone that is meeting with the students in a disciplinary manner.
And also, I want to say, we do progressive discipline. So we have levels two, one, two, three, and four. So we don't go straight to the Level 4. We will look at that Level 4, and we try to make a Level 2 sometimes, Level 3, and Level 4, so it's progressive. Also, when you're talking about looking at, you know, the student, we tell the dean, AP principal, to look at the range that we have. It's not like that for all Level 3s that a kid needs to be suspended out of school. All right? You have an option. Like, they can take in that consideration. You know, say the kid could be homeless, or, you know, the kid had a death in the family. So they are aware of that, so they can look at the range that we have and pick the appropriate consequence for that student.
And I guess identify the personnel that they need at that moment, based on IEP or maybe do we have in that screen, do we also have the level of English, for example, for ESO students? Because sometimes, imagine, they are in trouble, they get into that, you know, office, they don't know how to describe the situation, maybe, at a level that they expected by the grade that they are in?
So if a school has a student and English is not their native language, they will bring in an interpreter to help that student with their statement and help explain to that student why they're there in the office.
Also, the student is able to write their statement in their native language. So many times, even for Level 4 packets, we do receive statements written in Spanish. And so the school will then translate that for us, or, you know, in my case, I speak Spanish, so I'll translate for the team. But that is something, we never stop a student from just writing whatever they want to write on that form. And if they're more comfortable in their native language, then we accept that as well.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Member Lopez. A quick follow-up on one of her questions. If the dean is writing out, if a dean is the one bringing the referral, you know, for maybe a fight in the hallway or something in the lunchroom, do they typically discuss with teachers of the student? Do they ever, like, to try to find out, you know, more about the student or what the student may be going through? Do they typically talk to teachers of the student, or?
No, because when we're looking at discipline, we're looking at exactly what happened, based on what's in our student code of conduct.
Okay. Okay, are there any more? I don't see anyone else queued up. Any more questions? Superintendent, do you have any final thoughts?
Well, first, I want to thank the board for the thoughtful discussion. As I mentioned, this helps us look at how we can improve upon our code of conduct. Our goal is always to keep our children in school as much as possible. But we also need, as we mentioned earlier, to make sure our teachers feel safe, that they are able to teach. And so there's that balance between the consequence and making sure that children understand the reasons for the consequence. So we will take this information back. Some of this will be able to probably put together for this year, especially those involving resources for parents, the pamphlet, the video, making sure our principals go through this, so that they see what those, exactly what those steps mean. Actual changes to the code, we will not look at until the following school year, since we already have one for this school year. And as always, if there's other ideas that come to you prior to us coming to you formally with our recommended changes, please feel free to reach out to me, Dr. Armbruster, as we gather information throughout the year, even though we have a set point in time when we make the changes. But I really appreciate the thoughtful conversation and your passion for our children, making sure that they're getting the very best.
Thank you. And I'll just say, for me personally, I appreciate the opportunity to be able to have this discussion. I appreciate that this work session was brought together so quickly for us to talk after the last time when we had a discipline case and we had some confusion. So I appreciate you allowing us this opportunity, because it always is helpful for us to be able to talk with our peers, for sure. General Counsel, do you have a question or a comment? Oh, Chair Jacobs.
Thank you, Chair. Likewise, I want to thank the staff and the superintendent for this opportunity. Victor, can I ask you to mute? One question I have, I have heard from some people at Positive Pathways. I think it would be helpful for us to also know how many vacancies they have over there at this time and if they're needing to use subs. And then, I think it was Sarah that said our code is the same as SESSOR on the issue of campus disruptions. So I think if that was Sarah, I'd like to meet with you later to go over that language. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Jacobs. Okay, if that's it, then this meeting is adjourned.